Now, we are starting the board meeting, or restarting the board meeting, after an executive session and an audit meeting. And now, we are going to take a roll. We are all here, all nine of us, which includes Frank and a student board member, and our full complement of the board. So, um, we start with Clutch. And so, there is slide.
Clutch is the oath of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in his soul, with thy feet and justice for all.
Um, now we have for the good of the order and some board discussions. Tim, I mentioned that you had something to share?
First of all, I want to apologize for the wearing of the hat. I had a little surgical procedure done. Trust me, you'd rather me wear a hat. And so, I'm going to keep it on. I also have become the, a new fan of waking up in the morning, looking at the Times Union to see what new Lawrenceville athlete has made the Times Union Athlete of the Week. And I am very pleased to report that Jake Johnson, who plays for the Lawrenceville Boys Soccer Team, junior midfielder, was named the Times Union Boys Athlete of the Week for October 17 through 23rd. So congratulations, Jake.
So, I just wanted to say, I attended the District Advisory Committee meeting four weeks ago. And it's, the District Advisory Committee is basically a group of school teachers, administrators, parents, students, me as a board member. And it was an incredibly productive collaborative meeting. It, it just ran really well, and I, I was really pleasantly surprised. So I think the group is, is really effective, hell, you were there. I think the group is really effective in doing great work to, to bring different perspectives together and, and help advise the district on how we move forward on, on certain issues that are being debated. So I think it's great, Frank, and thanks for setting me up.
Thanks, Sarge, for marking the board. Thanks to all the other members. Are there any other items, Frank, that you want to?
Yeah, so, I don't usually get to talk to the parts, so thank you. I do want to actually just mention our girls' cross-country varsity. They were, they won Class D sectionals, so that's awesome. And Mariam, she got that right. Mariam, who actually lives in my neighborhood and I see her doing hills all the time, extremely dedicated individual. She basically took first. So they have states on Saturday, so I have no doubt that they're going to do extremely well this year. Our boys and girls soccer teams, they did amazing, really hard, won games, great wins for them for the Colonial Council. Also, we had cabaret last night, you know, and it just, it, it's amazing in, in, in the fall, not last night. Sorry, it's been a very long night. But it's just amazing to see that you have all these athletic things going on, and then we have fiddler on the roof, and then you have two hours of just some of the most talented individuals that we have in the district just playing and performing and singing. I mean, we had sixth graders singing that I could have sworn were 18-year-olds. I mean, it was absolutely amazing. So just really great stuff happening all around.
We also had a forum about the Catholic project, and there's a recording of that online. And I wanted to just talk to the board, see if you all were comfortable with moving our December meeting on Monday, the 5th, the day before the vote, to the elementary school. So, if you're all good with that. Anyone wants to come to that meeting? It will be at 7 o'clock in the elementary school, it sounds like. And location, exact location, do you?
Audit committee there as well.
Audit committee there as well, the whole shebang. So the fun will end during this in December. Mark your calendar, and then mark your calendar for the vote the following day. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
I have a few things.
Oh, awesome. I thought you were on that.
Is it later? Should I speak later?
You can speak now, but I felt like there was a.
There is an agenda.
No, you're coming up later.
You're 3.4.
Yes, you're on the, you're officially on the agenda. You're after Sean's exciting moment, but before.
Great, thank you.
Now we have an opportunity, so that's, we're all good?
Yes.
The cabaret the other night was so awesome, and you were there.
I was there, yeah, I did. I did play saxophone, as I.
Oh, you did not mention this.
So, I was a former music teacher, saxophone was my instrument. And as a couple of students asked me, they're like, oh my gosh, you play saxophone? And I said, I learned it just for this event. But it was, it was really nice to be able to play and support the kids with the other music teachers. Just again, like I said, it's, it's amazing how well our kids perform.
That's such a cool event.
And speaking of Frank's multi-talented abilities, please make sure you catch a picture of Frank at Chalk for Treat.
That's right.
In case you have not yet seen it, I believe it is somewhere online.
It's simply floating around.
It is, it is in the wind. That was a hint. So, uh, with that, we're going to move to the opportunity for the public to be heard, starting with students. If any student present would like to be heard, I'm just going to point everyone. Okay, there's a posted comment, just to point out this is important. But if there's a student that wants to be heard, we are opening the floor to students to come up and speak to, address the board. Any students present want to come up and? All right, any other members of the public would like to come up and speak to the board or be heard? Okay. Anyone? No? All right. Then we're going to move to the exciting audit presentation. Oh, wait.
I'll let you speak.
Okay. There's a podium right here. I don't know if the mic is on or not.
I think it is.
Okay.
Do I need one? Hi, everyone. Can you all hear me? Good evening. Please allow me the opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Erica McKinn, but many of you know me as Savannah and Skylar's mom. My twins who attend Lawrenceville Middle School as seventh graders. Glad I can back there. I'm here tonight to pursue the district, but more specifically the middle school, reinstating a school resource officer. Everyone thinks that added protection, such as an SRO, are unneeded because after all, nothing like that would ever happen here in our small town. But unfortunately, school acts of violence are prevalent in all communities, large and small, wealthy or poverty-stricken. It is my understanding that although discussions may be happening regarding an SRO, there needs to be a secondary committee formed within the school board to determine whether that's viable. I'm curious as to why time needs to be allocated to a secondary committee when each minute that ticks by forming that committee is another minute where our children aren't as protected as they deserve to be. The school board is an elected board of guardians for our children. At the end of the day, every single thing you do should be in the safest and best interest of these children. With the success of the School Resource Officer Pilot Program pre-COVID, I see no reason that the pilot program could not be reinstated for the remainder of the school year and reevaluated over the summer with the secondary committee if required. And if you think that the SRO could wait another year or even another month, I ask you to think about how well you'd learn at age 12, 13, 14, knowing that threats have been made, direct, intentional threats made to the student body, which are our babies. To date, there have been three threats made and reported in our middle school and high school since March of 2021. That's just six months of school time. As a parent, I can't imagine anything more critical in the budget than an added layer of protection in our schools. The School Resource Officer being on site allows an officer to be available immediately if or when threats are made again. It allows relationship building with our students and law enforcement. It brings a valuable resource to children who may need help and provides someone for them to reach out to before a situation rises to a threat or violence level. It brings another layer of security to our students. So please, I'm asking you to consider implementing the SRO as soon as possible as it is in alignment with the board's mission and goal statements. Protect our kids as if they were your own and bring back the SRO. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate you speaking to us. Is there anyone else that has, would like to take the opportunity to be heard at this point? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Jim, would you?
Summarize the audit report?
Yes.
Sure, no problem. So, as we heard during the audit committee, the, both the main report and the ECA report are unmodified, which is their highest level. There were some adjustments, mostly due to other post-employment benefits, which is a standard thing that happens in every school district. Pretty much every school district you see is going to be underwater with that report. We are, our current amount is 87 million over 30 years. So you kind of understand that's a long timeframe for them to estimate. People who aren't even hired yet are still there, included in there technically. But it's no different than any other school district. We came in very well. We came in a little short on revenue, but that was because of the grant funding that was put in there, as we've discussed before. And came in much shorter on expenses, partially due to the grant as well. Other than that, there's not much to say. I'd be happy to answer any questions again or talk to the audit committee next month about none of the single audit.
It was a clean audit.
It was a very clean audit.
We had a good year.
We had a very good year. And we implemented the SB 87, which was a bit of the pain in the butt. But we got through it, we figured out what the numbers were, and everything was good.
Thank you.
Can I say one thing real quick? Just a testament to Jim and the business office, and Robin, and Christie, and Francine, and, you know, everyone that works in our business office, it's huge. I mean, to have an unmodified audit like this is big. But also the ECA, that never really happens in the district. So hats off to Jen Smith, all of our club advisors, all of our kids who are the secretaries and treasurers of their clubs, because that focuses on that. The ECA is not our business office, our audit is our business office. The ECA is the treasurer and all the kids and all the adults who are overseeing those programs, they're the reason why that program came out unmodified this year. So it was a good year, and, you know, it's nice to see that.
Yeah, and ECA is extra classroom activity funds, for anyone who's curious. We, we discussed when the, we received the report from the external auditors that this was the first year any of us can remember where we had an unmodified opinion on those funds, which is pretty remarkable.
It's unusual, yes.
And Jim, you and your staff also got a nice shout out in the body of the report, thanking you for your cooperation.
Professionalism.
Yeah, professionalism, so good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any more questions for Jim? Now it's time for Karen Conroy's exciting presentation.
I'm going to come up and join Karen. If this says thing in call, can you just click it?
Oh, all right.
All right. Karen and Eric are going to do a joint presentation.
So, New York State testing results. We're going to go through both the elementary middle level and the regions as well. We're going to start with the New York State Testing Program, which is, as most of you know, grades three through eight, annual test with ELA, English Language Arts, and mathematics. And then we do a science test, one's at the elementary and one's at the intermediate level.
I'm just going to say something really quick before we get into this. If you're not familiar with it, New York State Testing is this basic standardized test that we all do for English, math, science, and then there's our region testing. The district uses many other multiple assessments to be able to assess where our students are. This is one layer of assessments that are utilized. When it comes to state accountability, they use these. They don't use all the other measures that we have. So state accountability measures is the pre-grade testing and the regions. Those are really where your state accountability comes in.
For the assessments, yeah. And one of the pieces of that state accountability, even though they're making changes this year, it does include participation. So what you see here is our participation rate in the exams from grades three through eight. This is ELA. Math looks almost exactly the same, or maybe one or two percentage points different, except for math in eighth grade. That is a lot less participation because we have all of our algebra students who are not counted in this. We do not ask them to double test. We don't ask them to take an eighth grade math test and an algebra regions. We just allow them to do the algebra regions. So that has a pretty low math rate. I keep pushing wrong things, so I'm getting used to this. This is called a heat map, and it will show us our trends for, from 2017 through 2022. The darker, the green, the higher the proficiency level. This is English Language Arts assessments, grades three through eight. And, you know, New York State will have that caveat that says, you really want to be careful because you want to remember that we just had, come off of two years of COVID and that COVID-19 will have an impact on our.
I was just saying, this area right here, basically, too.
Yeah, you can ignore 2019. 2019, obviously, is going to look different than 2021. We've had these, the impact of COVID. But we all kind of want to see how our students are doing, right? We want to take that into account and kind of see what that gap might look like. All the Times Union came out and shared that, overall, across the state, ELA was actually a little bit, teeny bit higher in 2022 than it was in 2019. Now, we're not counting 2021 because that was a, take it if you're here, take it if you want, the state pressure pushing that, encouraging that. In 2020, there wasn't a test. So that's why we're kind of going back to pre-pandemic there. And you can see, like New York State, we, overall, have an average of proficiency a little bit higher than we did back in 2019. It's interesting and unexpected.
Why do you think 21 was higher? Overall?
I think that just had to do with the, the.
There was a lot of questions.
The kids who wanted to take the test.
The volatility of the exams, who was doing during that timeframe.
We had a lot lower numbers because, you know, people who are remote didn't come in to take the test. It was just a difference. So it's really not something we can.
And the state even says really, too much.
Don't put a lot into it.
I'm getting used to this. And our mathematics proficiency, same kind of chart. You're going to notice that grade eight math looks a little orange, a little red. And those numbers are basically because, again, we don't have the algebra students who are strong math students taking that math exam. So we had, I think, last year, 31 students take that test. 31, that was it, that was the whole end. We had maybe, I'm trying to think, I think another third of our whole population have refused, and then we had almost a third who were taking the algebra test, so.
Something to note is, even if these students are hitting the red and they're not being, you know, under proficiency, when they go on the next year or the year after that to take the algebra, they're still passing. Our proficiency rate for passing the region's exam is really high. So it's, we're not seeing an issue with our students not being able to make the assessments, it's just with that reevaluation.
Of course, the region is what you have to, you have to pass in your diploma. But you're absolutely right. The Level 2, we have different levels, as you know, for the ELA, for the math. The Level 2 is more toward, geared towards getting a 65 on the regions. And the Level 3 for ELA would be getting a 75, and it would be getting geared towards that for the math. So that Level 3 is a lot higher than, than, which is why the, the elementary and middle school, the students struggling as a Level 2, quote, struggling as Level 2, they're, they end up doing usually pretty well. I'll go over it again. Our science assessment. So, in the past, it was fourth grade science test. We will not have that this year. We will have a fifth grade science test the following year, a new test. But this, so last year was last year, last year was the last year of the fourth grade, and that is the elementary one. And you can see that we really were quite close to where we've always been. And eighth grade did go down a little bit. I want to remind people, even as we're looking at the region science, science is a hands-on type of class, right? And when we have two years without real, or without the kind of practice and layoffs that we usually have had going on, we did take a talk. We had our department leader for science talk about that a lot last year. He's been at one of our science, you know, he's been about it, so. That does seem to be better. Sorry. I think.
Before we get to this, so just really quick, if you're wondering, where did we stand in comparison to the New York State? Kind of, the markers, how young, we saw it went lower. We're above New York State.
So, yes, I'm glad you brought that up because that is something I forgot about. So ELA for the state is just under half of the state being proficient, about, I want to say 46%. I think we were at 68%.
Can you stay on that one just for a second? So, to untrained eye, I look at that and I see fifth grade ELA were down. Is that, is that common?
When we get to our next slide, you're really going to be able to see this in a better comparison.
It'll put it more in perspective.
I'm just wondering, is fifth grade a year when kids struggle traditionally with ELA, or is this kind of an aberration?
I, I think we kind of have to see a better trend more outside of just the jumping back to 2018, 2019. And the reason why I say that is because our cohort, the number of students who tested was small.
Understand, I'm just, I'm just wondering, is fifth grade one of those years where ELA traditionally dips?
If you look at our numbers, there's a smaller dip sometimes than that. So, yes, but, but, you know.
It was the highest in 2019.
It was our highest. So I don't think we can say there's always a traditional year where it goes. Traditionally, eighth grade, we know our math scores are going to be lower, because we know that there's a reason for that one. When there's so many different factors that would really go into this, it's hard to say exactly why. But there's a lot of things that we do in the ECA, when our kids do have like little stumbling blocks or where there's things, there's a lot of things that we're looking at to see why that happens.
And math for the state is around 40% of passing for the state, or proficient for the state, and you can see we're at 62. So even though.
60.
62%.
Oh, sorry.
2022, yep. So, again, we're a lot higher than, than where the state is on that. So, as Frank just brought up, the comparison, we, we were able to get the data from a number of low-needs districts in our region.
So low-needs is a high-wealth ratio. The higher wealth ratio that you have in your communities, the lower need your district is considered. We have a high-wealth ratio, therefore, we're considered a low-needs district. This, Yuna, Bethland, Burton Hills, North Calumney, all considered low-needs school districts.
So when we look at that, this is for ELA, again, it's just proficiency, which are the highest levels there. We've got Lawrenceville in this kind of tealish blue. And you can see that for fourth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, three out of the six grades, 50%, we were actually at the top. We were the highest performing of the, of those high-performing groups. For math, again, you can see both grades four and grade seven were at the top. And I think we're number two for fifth grade and sixth grade. So, again, gives us a little bit more perspective. So, Tim, going back to your question about fifth grade, and even though that's a drop, as you can see here, you know, we're, we're right on par with this Yuna and just under, we're, you know, Bethland's at the top.
And what you see is, there's a drop for most schools when it comes to fifth grade. And that's what I was going to say, there's sometimes a drop when you're looking at these, so fifth grade and eighth grade, everybody's kind of dealing with some of the same issues.
Yeah.
So, but on the eighth grade math, I mean, we dropped significantly lower compared to our peers. So do they have the same program as us, where they all advanced student, eighth grade students into algebra?
They have a wider amount of students as well taking those. So it's a wide enough that they're being able to pass when it comes back. Plus, our opt-out rate this year in eighth grade was high. So that also impacts, you know, maybe that.
Thoroughly 31 kids.
Yeah.
Wow, that's a small grade.
A small.
Small cohort.
Yeah. So that's why you're seeing.
Oh, I didn't skip the math, right? Science.
Okay, so, I think, and again, we're not saying who these students are, right? These are all of our students, all cohorts, all subject levels, special education, non-special education, it's all of our students together. And this is what we're getting. When we go into the high school, region's exam is the high school. You cannot opt out of it, you can't, you have to sit for them, they're credit-bearing. So it changes it a little bit on the high-stakes testing test.
And what we're going to see here are the big ones, right? We have the whole school district, so even kids who do not walk the halls of Clayne Mountain, but our students who may be programmed somewhere else. And we will have June of 2022. So we don't have the, you know, the couple kids that were August kids. So this is, first one is for the social studies department. Just a reminder that last year, in 2022, they did, they canceled the, where is it, regions, US history exam. Remember, they had a trigger warning, there was a concern because there was the school shooting upstate New York and in Buffalo, New York, and they just pulled that exam last year. So we didn't have anything for that. For global history, there's been a transition from the old global history to a new, new framework called global history. Clayne Mountain in 2019 did not move over to the newest test at that time. We're still able to give the transition, so we did. So we could learn more about the new test. These were our very few students, but our students in and out of district placement that they gave that test. So, we're mostly comparing the 2019 transition to the new.
And that's three students, and that's 66.
So, three students. This is our mathematics. You can see, you know, actually, that was pretty phenomenal. We got 99% passing rate there. If you kind of think back to what Frank was talking about with our students do, do well and when they get to the math test. 2022, we had 94%. So is there a little drop? Yes, but, you know, really not bad when you think about two years of COVID. Algebra II went up, and then a bit of a drop there for geometry.
And these students have never taken a region's exam. So, I just want to, you know, I think that the point we got to make is, here's kids who have never sat for a high-stakes test after two years going and taking a high-stakes test. You know, we're seeing our numbers being pretty evident and very clear, pretty stable comparison. We have some small dips, but overall, we're really strong.
Is that the percentage of kids that passed?
Yes.
And was the passing rate different in 2022?
The passing rate that you're seeing here is a 60.
I mean, it's great, I'm sorry.
Is a 65 or about like it always is. There was what's called a special appeal.
Right.
So for students personally, not for school accountability, but for a student, they were able to take advantage of that.
So we have, let's say, 13 students who maybe didn't pass that exam, got a 63 or 62 or 60, they could have gotten the appeal and still been able to get credit for their readings. We just don't get to count that for our community.
You wouldn't see that.
And these are all needed for graduation?
Yes.
So this is indicative of the graduation rate?
Right. No, because then you have August, and you have other.
Contributing factor.
Yeah, there's a lot of other things. You know, even if you, we've seen that these are graduation rates to be 99% or 100%, even if you have an 86 or 85% one year upon the exams.
Yeah, because they, you do the exam, or they may not need it if it's not one of the five. Now they have all those different paths. So you have extra opportunities, alternate opportunities. Science, again, I'm going to go back because you will see, you know, we do have some drops here with our science, but we have student quarantine, teacher quarantine. It's a hands-on class. We had two years where we have very limited types of labs. And I think you're going to see a big change as we move forward with this because now we're back into, I mean, I was talking to you about this today. I think it was, you know, 10 days out. If you were COVID, you were not here. Last year, we started with masks, we were still spread out. It's not.
Labs were not hands-on, as the comparison is here now. And we're switching to project-based learning because our next standard is down the road. Our would be project-based, which would be more hands-on somewhat.
ELA, which looks actually very similar to 2018 if you look at that. So not terribly different there. And then a little reflection, which.
So, one of the things that we're doing is, as we look at these, we're saying, okay, here's our big overall scores, right? But if that, how's that actually really impact what we're doing on a daily basis? So our teachers in the middle school and elementary school, and even high school, they're looking at their standards. So they get these reports that basically identify the standards that are there, So they get these reports that basically identify the standards that are there. And we see where we were in comparison to other BOSIs, where we lower the BOSIs or on par with BOSIs. If we were there, our teachers go, okay, what does that mean? Did we miss something? Is there something that I have to reteach to these kids? How does that fit into my math? So we're being reflective on the standards, not on the exam itself. So the exam, okay, we might not have kids who as well. We know there's a lot of factors. But what standard, maybe they didn't hit. So if there's a standard, our, you know, our I three-point-seven.
We were pretty close with the BOSIs, but since we're so much higher everywhere else, that's something we take a look at.
So we, we do a little deep dive. And then if there's any scaffolding or anything we have to do in the previous or next grade, make sure those kids go up a little bit more. That's what our teachers are looking at.
When you say close to BOSIs, you're talking about all the districts within the component?
Correct. Yep, all the.
They'll do an average, and then you can see if you're above, below the average.
So these are some of the reports. We don't want to bore you all with the report. But these are some of the reports that we get.
And in the, so sorry.
So.
Go ahead. So that would tell me three-point-seven is an area we need to work on?
Well, it'd be something, it doesn't mean.
It'd be something you can take.
As far as students maybe just didn't hit the same the other schools did. And we need to look why.
Correct.
Was it something maybe with the test itself and it was a reading comprehension of the, of the question, which has happened in the past? Or was it a, a standards that just maybe the kids didn't understand? And the teacher said, you know what? Let's do this maybe two days instead of one day. You know, there's a lot of different reasons why.
If it was only one multiple choice question?
Right.
Or was it, you know, three questions that were two multiple choice, one extract response? It makes a difference, right? Because if you've only missed one little, one more multiple choice, you go back, like Frank talks about, into the reading of that. Well, and we have an item distractor that says most kids chose D. Why was that? You know, what is, um, any little bit. Sometimes it's just not, not even terribly relevant, you know? And, and then also at the high school.
Yeah.
So we're looking at, um, item distractors, we're looking at standards, we're looking at, are there, um, any anomalies in student performance? And talking about as a department, we had our middle school and high school work with the departments, um, last October, heck day, six, maybe? And, um, they had some time for data, but they need more time. So they'll probably be using the next department meeting to go a little bit deeper to continue on with that.
So, any questions or anything that you'd like us to bring back to curriculum or anything that you'd want us to look at further?
I think we agreed that maybe we'll take a little time during the next curriculum meeting to kind of reopen this up, talk a little further about it. So it will be on the agenda for the curriculum.
Absolutely.
Do you have any? And, uh, there's any specific questions we want the curriculum committee to dive into more deeply? No, I, I just think what, what gets published in the media about these scores is very misleading.
If you look at the regional comparison of our low needs, we care about. And, you know, you can see a lot of, yes, there's going to be some small, you know, dips, but that is to be expected. But we're already seeing kids grow up. I mean, some of the teachers are already saying they're already over where they were last year at this point in some of the grades, just because of the fact that you had more time and more ability.
That was an elementary comment that I had from the third-grade teachers when I shared those results, saying, you know, I'm farther along than I had been last year. Last year, I was trying to do some makeup time. We had kids who were in hope, we had kids in pods. And, you know, they, you know, those kids, the third graders, think about it, you know? They went home first grade year when we're reading, when we're learning to count, all those, you know, it's, it's a fundamental time. So she's saying we're even farther ahead now.
So our teachers have done a great job rebuilding those, those skills and, you know, moving forward. And I think you're going to continue to see our scores up, but, you know, we're making the progress.
All right, gee, I don't know exactly what media reports you're referring to, but if you're talking about either statewide or regionally, there are some districts that really went badly. And they're really down in the dumps compared to what they should have been. We're not one of them, which is the best, that's the good news.
That's the point.
Yeah, and, uh, that, that's really good to see because in a lot of other districts, they're really struggling.
But of course, all means all. So we want everybody to be doing the best and developing and, and we'll be working to continue with that.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget to tell Karen she can leave.
Yeah, yeah, great, thank Karen. All right, I think now we, we get the, uh, the segment of Shawna demonstrating the Promethean board.
So last time, I'm going to give Shawna a second. Um, you know, Shawna, Tim, you actually mentioned this at our last meeting. We have a big Promethean rollout initiative for our technology. Um, our instructional spaces now have these in them. Um, there's.
Is that a?
That is a Promethean board, so.
I know that always here, or is that?
That is always here.
Yes.
Yep. So it's in this room all the time. Um, a lot of our rooms all have these now. And I know that the kids talk about them a lot. If you have kids, then they might have talked about some of those things. Our teachers are still learning. So Shawna is our embedded professional development person for technology. And Shawna's really been helping kind of move this initiative forward, so I'll put Shawna.
Well, thank you. Um, so I just, I talked to some teachers before I came here. I just asked them, like, what are the things that you've been using? What are the things that you're most excited about, um, with the Prometheans? And, you know, it's only been a couple of weeks, so we're just, you know, we're, I think we're just barely scratching the surface as to what, um, these panels can do. Um, but one of the things that I heard the most was all of my stuff is right here. I don't have to have anything attached to it. All of my teaching, the things that I can use, my presentations, the everything, it's all right here. So every panel has a Chrome box attached to it, and a Chrome box is basically a Chromebook. Um, and it's attached right there. So, um, if you, if you see, there's an input, and then right here is where I got to my, uh, my Chrome box. And I signed in, and this is what, I was signing on to anything, just I have access to everything. So, um, I just pulled up a couple of things. This Schmidt, you might recognize this from when we were doing fifth grade remote, so I decided to pull some of those up. Um, but you, um, one of the things that they really love is that you have this and then you can annotate with it. So you have, um, this is just from my Google Drive. And then I can take this and I can write on it as if I was, you know, doing it. So I can have that right here with the kids. So I'm annotating, the kids are seeing it. Um, this might be something they have on their Chromebooks as well. Um, on the Chromebooks, they have, there is an extension where, um, if I give them permission to, they can screen share from their Chromebooks. So I can see what they're working on. I can have up to ten kids at a time, I'm sorry, four kids at a time screen sharing, uh, ten kids at a time writing at the same time. So it's, it's super collaborative and it kind of goes along with our mission, um, as we dove into Google. Google is all about collaboration, and this kind of fits in with, with that. Um, so then if I was, you know, going out, I just took something from, uh, Bridges, same kind of thing. I could make this, you know, for them here, and I could have the kids come up here. I could have the kids all screen sharing from their Chromebooks if I wanted to. Um, so that was one of the biggest things that I heard from people is that I can, I don't have to be connected to a computer here. It's all embedded, right? So another thing that was, um, people were very excited about is, um, the Spinner app. Just give it a second. So I have the Spinner app here, and I put you guys in there. And I don't know if you're going to win. Um, I heard there's a, there's a big lottery, you know, prize out there. You're not winning that, but, um.
Oh, yes, I am.
But to do that, uh, I don't have that kind of money, uh, but let's see. All right.
Oh.
You're the winner of the evening, and I will get to your prize. Um, let's pat on the back. Um, so just going into my home screen, um, I have the ability, which is super cool. I think people are really excited about that. I have this little part right here that has all of my, um, settings saved on it. So I can go to any Promethean board, well, in the district, but really any Promethean board ever, anywhere. And I can click, I can just push it up here, and it will load up all of my settings. So this is my, um, my screen saver that I have. And so anyone that I go into, it'll have everything that I have there. Um, I can also log out by using that. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and go to the whiteboard because that's a big one. Uh, the whiteboard is, um, you may have seen it in classrooms as smartboard, uh, when we had the smartboards. But this is like so much better. Um, it is infinite, so I can write on this, and then I can move it up. I can take what I wrote, and I can manipulate it, and I can turn it, and I can, each piece of it becomes its own thing. And I can manipulate it however, and it kind of acts like it does your phone. So, um, it's very intuitive for kids to use. Have you used it, Talia?
Not yet.
You haven't had your fingers on it yet?
No.
Oh, I'm going to come into your class tomorrow, and I'm going to make sure that you put your fingers on it. You want to come up and do this? And then you can also. Yep, absolutely. If you're saying that you're there, I'm all. Okay.
And then erase it.
You can erase, don't worry. Because I really do want to. Oh, yeah, do you see how she just turned it over and she erased just like this? So there's erasing that way, but then you remember. Yeah. Go ahead and do it. Okay.
Oh.
You are the one. I'm going to do it. I've seen my teacher.
Oh.
It was just, I get two.
Yes, exactly.
So this is Talia's signature, and I'm going to save this forever. So the really great thing about this is that I can save it. Um, and because I am signed into my Google Drive, I'm going to save it right to my Google Drive. And then there, it's going to be in my drive forever. I am never getting rid of that. Um, so there's other things in here on the whiteboard. Um, there is different types of paper that you can put on here for different types of classes. Um, there's music paper, um, here's the handwriting paper, um, so there's all of that. There's also math tools that you can put in there. Um, so you can use these for different disciplines, and you can manipulate it just like you can do, just like in four. So there's that. Um, what else can I just do up here? Um, I can go and I can take pictures from the web, and I can put it directly into, um, the whiteboard. Um, I just want to show you. It's a gallery of charts and tablets. So if I wanted to do a mind map, what I'm getting. So if I wanted to do a mind map of something, let's, um, maybe a topic of something.
Salamanders.
What did you say?
Salamanders. I was going to go with something.
You have, there you go.
So.
We see the, uh, reflection results. Go to study.
So I'm going to find an image of salamander. And now, wait, this one's cute, right?
That's an actual, yeah.
Does that assist you with that?
Yeah.
Good. Yep. All right. So I'm going to, uh, screen capture that. And so it just takes like a screenshot, and then I'm going to crop it up here. Click on Done, and then I'm going to open it in the whiteboard. And then there's my picture of the salamander. I'm going to move it around, and then we can do a mind map of the salamander. Cool? Um, let's see, one other thing, there are, um, there is a timer in here that the teachers are using all the time that I'm hearing about. Chromium is just like Chrome, uh, but it's the Android version of it. Um, and so I can sign into here, and I can get anything that I would want, if I would need in my Google Drive, right here. And, um, I think Frank wanted me to show a really cool YouTube video. I was kind of up here when you guys were doing audit, but. Turn it on. There's a dolphin to make you smile. And then I have some, it's really cool.
And the other cool thing is, no matter how sunny it is in the room, you can always see it.
Right. The students in the room, you guys know that when you have the smartboard, right? You have to turn off all the lights and close all the shades, or they don't see it. And Will's doing this, like, yeah, this is what it's here. Um, you can notice all the lights are on. So that's just really just scratching the surface of what this is capable of. Uh, we'll continue, uh, to, you know, go in more in depth of what we can do with this. And that's what I'll be doing, uh, going into the, um, in the teams and exploring some more.
Great.
Thank you, Shawna.
Any questions?
Can I ask a question? Is the video capability, like you were talking about kids being out with the science labs, does there be video capability? The like, possibly like demonstrate the analogy?
So, are you talking like a Google Meet or something like, like what we were doing when the kids were home?
Yeah, like if a kid was home, but five days or whatever, quarantine or COVID or whatever it is.
Yeah, um, we could always put a webcam on here, and then because we have access to all of our Google Sheets, we could just go on to Google Meet and do it.
Thank you.
We're just scratching the surface on this, and our staff are just learning because it's not easy moving a big transition. And, you know, I think everybody's starting to learn and understand how this works and get the bugs out, but.
Sorry, one more thing. We also got, uh, every, all the teachers and TAs got new laptops too, which, uh, they are able to screen share directly from their laptops. Um, so wirelessly, which is really cool too. So that's, that's been an awesome one.
Yeah, because our computers were outdated, and we're starting to hit end of life. So hence this giant technology initiative that we've been doing. And it was a big undertaking over the beginning of the year, but we're starting to get there. Thanks to Shawna and some other people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Shawna, you can leave when you're done.
Talia, now that Shawna can use, go home with your signature. Definitely not do anything embarrassing.
I mean, never.
Never. Would you like to give this student member a report, the first one ever done for?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Um, so I just have a few, um, events that have been going on. Um, I know some of them were already mentioned, including cabaret and, um, sports, um, updates. Um, I wanted to talk about, um, the trunk-or-treat that was held on Halloween. It was set up by our high school ski club. Um, there were, um, over a hundred and fifty, uh, students and their families present, and a hundred and forty dollars were raised for UNICEF. And, um, and, um, Mr. McCree was there, um, we had our advisor, De'Simmon, and, um, I was there. It was a really great time, and I think like we all had a great time. Um, this past Friday, uh, the Addiction Care Center of Albany came to the high school with three addiction survivors to speak with students about their experiences with addiction and recovery. Uh, I thought their stories were really moving, and I really hope that, um, the students, uh, took their message, like, took away some strong messages that they were saying. One upcoming event that I had, uh, the, um, American Red Cross Blood Drive hosted by the high school student government is on Thursday, November seventeenth, from seven-thirty to one. Uh, it's open to all community members, faculty, staff, and students, as long as they meet the requirements. And if you would like to schedule an appointment, you can find our location on the Red Cross website. And, um, yeah, that wraps it up for this month's, uh, student report.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Shawna.
Kelly, did you mention ski club? Did you say ski club?
Oh, key club.
Key club, okay.
It's with Kiwanis.
I know we had talked about the return of the ski club someday, but that has not happened.
Yeah, it hasn't happened.
Happening, happening.
I have a question. Um, we are at item three-point-five, and it's Frank's Promethean report.
All right. So, here we go. So first things first, thank you, Talia. And, you know, the Promethean boards, as everybody kind of saw, definitely so many different things we can do. Just to mention, the other day I went in and teachers were absent. There was a teacher absent from school, and other teachers were meeting, and they had a board of, a video camera up, and they were having a conference. So I've seen it, they were doing it, it was really cool. I have no idea exactly how they did it, or they did it. It was super cool to watch. Um, ACCA was here. Um, they are coming in actually on Wednesday. So on Wednesday, this is for parents, not for students. And at seven o'clock in the pack, they're going from seven to seven-thirty. They're going to just talk about making connections and different options for parents about addiction or different things like that. And I know some people are like, well, you know, that's ninth grade or tenth grade. That's sixth grade, that's seventh grade. These things start young. Um, you know, we have, you know, there's always stories about sixth graders vaping, or sixth graders, you know, experimenting, or someone they know in their household. And it's just, these things happen. So, you know, for families, this is an opportunity if you have questions to learn about it. Also, they're bringing in the hidden dangerous bedroom, so this is the cool part. At seven-thirty, this room is actually going to be set up as a bedroom. They're going to have a dresser, bed, all these different things. And it's basically the scariest scavenger hunt a parent could ever do. Um, and it teaches you things that you would not realize where students could hide things, or different things to look for, right? So if you're talking about somebody who's depressed, and your child might be having an issue, you may not realize it. You go in the room and find X that could lead to that. Um, but they definitely show you a lot of different things that you don't know. I've done it twice, missed everything twice. Um, but, you know, it is a very interesting thing. I brought in dangers to other places, and every time. I brought in dangers to other places and every time, parents had asked to bring it back. They say this is the one that they keep wanting to do because someone's like, oh, I heard it was there, I missed it. So, you know, if anyone can come, they're not doing a video component of it or anything. They do think they can bring it back in the spring if people want it. But, you know, it's going to be a pretty good event for people who wanna come and check it out.
This one?
This Wednesday, yep. Excuse me. So every time I like to talk about the strategic plan, I knew Arji went to the DAC and she might mention it. So I wanna kinda talk about, um, there's two components. There was our safety, or sorry. Our communication component and that is our DAC. Our district advisory committee is then through our shared decision-making. That has come a long way in a short period of time where now we have, you know, it's actually down into the buildings and the buildings are doing all these initiatives and different types of things. The elementary school and middle school and now the high school's next. They actually did a welcoming environment study that's actually done by their building leadership teams. Where they do an activity to make sure how many teachers or how many checkmarks a student can get to make sure they have the connections from all the adults. I know it was pretty powerful in the elementary school. They did it today in the middle school. And now they are gonna do it also in the high schools as well. So there's a lot of really neat things happening when it comes down to like voice, right? One thing I wanna talk about was technology. So one of our goals, integrate and support, um, the Voorheesville Central School District will support the recruitment, training, and retention of highly qualified and diverse staff. And you wonder like, where does technology come into that? Well, one of the goals is to integrate and support dynamic teaching and learning opportunities through the development and enhancement of all related technologies within the district. Hence, Promethean Boards, one-to-ones, laptops. These things are giving teachers the ability to have the most up-to-date technology and initiatives so we can limit some of the other stressors, hopefully, as we start to work through the bugs, right? Over a period of time to make sure that people have everything they need to be able to meet the needs of our students. There'd be nothing worse than coming in and not having the equipment that works. Or not being able to do the inactive lessons that you wanna do because you don't have the equipment that you want. So this is one of those things that we're doing and this is just the beginning. Now a lot of professional development will come over the next couple of years. To really help people learn how to use all of these different things as we move forward. But this is the foundation where you're just getting them up. We're pretty happy about all this different stuff going on. Any questions? Alright. The elementary school capital project. I will talk about this until I'm blue in the face and I only have to do it for one more board meeting. On December sixth, we'll have our vote. We had our capital project forum the other night. People came. The one thing they said was if you did the tour and you had everybody walk up the stairwell, everybody would vote for it. Because the parents who did the tour with us realized how those stairs kinda move up and down. That's one of the components of the elementary school is the removal of those first stairs. If you're a parent and you're seeing this and you walk into the elementary school and go up, you'll notice that on the left-hand side, the stairwell actually moves a little bit. And you'll see how it's starting to rust out. It's safe, it's completely fine. Our engineers have looked at it, but it is something that's there.
These are front stairs?
Front stairs as part of the current main entrance, right? You know, a couple of things came up at the project about Martin Road. So we're working with DPW and, um, excuse me, in the town to make sure that we've done all the appropriate studies. Also, somebody mentioned something about well water. You have to be a hundred feet away for septic and leak fields from wells. We're well over a hundred feet from the drainage system that will be putting into that to anyone's well within our property. And that was one thing that was brought up and I made sure that we don't check that and confirm that all. A couple of things about the project they think are important that were brought up at the other forum was in not only our enrollment and the numbers of people that were getting in and being able to keep our class sizes down by being able to put these in. Mr. Vivendio also said art, our program offerings have changed. In the past, we may have had art on the cart. Now we have an in-depth art classroom where they have kilns and everything else that they're doing. We might have had music on the cart a few years back. We don't. All our music classrooms are inside. Hence what we get out of our cabaret, right? These are all self-contained classrooms that we have for our students. What I did fail to mention is what one person stated, this is Sarita, if you know Sarita. She worked for our district for multiple years, I think over thirty, if I'm correct in saying so. Sarita mentioned also some of the safety factors, you know, and right now it is safe down there. But there are components that we can add it to be safer. And that is the busing component down there. The buses do back up. They are crowded in that area. Buses should not back up. That's a bad thing when buses back up. Moving them out to safety. The transportation facility itself is getting to be unsafe for our, for our mechanics to be able to utilize. You know, the secure vestibule area of how our parents can go in and out. Or anyone comes in the building can go downstairs or upstairs. That's something that you wanna be able to create a better safety vestibule for. And if you're talking about drainage and all the other things, our transportation facility is right next to a river. You know, that one has always surprised me a little bit. I mean, we have all the right drainage and everything, but, you know, that increases some of the safety components as well. So there's a lot of real positive things that keep coming out of this project that I like to talk about. But, you know, as they come up, I just wanna make sure we're currently addressing them. Tim has the mailer on his desk. Thanks, Jim. Tim, shameless plug right here.
Tableau, yeah.
Yep, so shameless plug. We are doing another mailer that will come out the week after Thanksgiving, right before the vote. That's gonna be a four to five-page mailer, really kinda go in depth of some of the questions that came out. Really hit some more of the budget questions. We've updated our budget presentation on the website as well. So there's a lot of things that we're doing continually throughout the project. Any questions on that? Right? Next.
This thing turned out great.
Thank you.
Really, really well done.
It was a lot of time. Just trying to figure out this right.
I can imagine.
And thank you, Jim, for doing the good Q and As on the budgets. So Bus Patrol, um, this is the last one we talked about, the facilities committee. Is anyone here familiar with Bus Patrol? So Bus Patrol in Albany County have agreement together. North Colony is actually a school that has done it. There's other schools that are starting to do it as well. This agreement is Bus Patrol comes in, they put their equipment on school buses. And the school buses then are.
Patrol is a company.
Is a company, correct. And they put the equipment on their school buses and their AI and different equipment that they have. They actually ticket people for passing school buses. Albany County has done this initiative. There's been laws that have been passed to do it. Bus Patrol comes in, it's no charge to any of the districts. They get the revenue off of any of the tickets that happen. Many, many schools are doing it. I've shared the agreement that our attorneys have looked over with the people on the facilities committee. One of the components that came up during the facilities was, what about the cameras? Who owns those cameras? Because again, they're on the outside, not the inside. We own inside. This is outside that are running. Per the law that was written, schools do not have access to those. So schools don't have access to those cameras. They're, they're by Bus Patrol. They have all the requirements. And that was actually written into the law. It has nothing to do with the school. So I found that section of law sent to the facilities committee. But that was one that, because we talked about maybe negotiating that out, we can't negotiate that out. That is something that's been passed into the law.
So Bus Patrol wrote the law so that they don't have.
There was definitely some, some conversations going on that created that law.
Was that New York State?
That is the state.
Or is that?
That is the state law of the county, so.
You would, you're saying you would, you would want those?
No, but let's, so the question came up and Rob and I think Tricia both made this question. Let's say there is an accident that occurs and the district's being sued for that accident. And that bus video footage would be able to help that. Or let's say there's a disciplinary infraction, who knows what it could be? That came out of that and that bus video saw that, we're not eligible to get that video. So we don't have.
Even if Bus Patrol said here?
That subpoenaed, we assure you.
Suburly, you can subpoena Bus Patrol, but per the law, the district does not have the ability to get them. Yeah. The reason why I asked the question, I have more of a philosophical problem with somebody else owning data that I regenerate. That's, that's neither here nor there.
Yep.
Yeah. It's more, yeah.
So that is, um, that Bus Patrol is basically that in a nutshell. I know I sent you some little data on that. I can send more. I think the question I wanted to ask the board and kinda have a little bit of discussion tonight was, is this something that you want me to pursue? Now, many school districts are doing this. Our neighboring school districts are looking into this and hopefully doing it. Four more school districts are about to sign onto this program. With other school districts signing on all around Albany County and now in Rochester County. So this is gonna be something that you're gonna see more widespread. We don't have the ability right now. We can do the tickets, but we don't actually allow it to do it, correct, Jim?
We have to send enough DMV who decides if a violation is.
Is that who we send it to? Is DMV and not the Albany County sheriffs or?
No, yeah, because it's, it's, we've witnessed it. The Albany County sheriff did not, so.
There's a question from the student.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't take that, but there'll be an opportunity for the public to be heard again if we tend to.
So just write it down and then at the end, ask your questions away.
So, and, and we've heard a little bit more about this at facilities. The, the net of it, I can try to understand it correctly, is the biggest difference is that these folks are gonna go make sure tickets get prosecuted for us, right? Like, I mean, right now, nothing else really changes as far as our possibilities. We, we have cameras on the arms right now. No, but they're cameras on the arms.
Some, some of them have cameras, not, no.
We don't have cameras on all of us.
We just started buying them, what was it, last year or two years ago?
Last year and this year.
Yeah, when, so when I got here, we started buying them. So before that, we did not have bus arm cameras at all. So we are now purchasing them. If we did Bus Patrol, we wouldn't have to purchase them. Bus Patrol would purchase them for us. It's about two grand, right?
So that's the.
But the, yeah.
The ownership.
The, the biggest difference is that somebody makes sure that these tickets get prosecuted.
Correct.
And it doesn't have to be us. And.
It would never be us because it'd be the DMV.
Well, no, we're, we're responsible for handing that over to DMV and initiating that process. Now we don't do anything.
We can, we are completely out of it.
Under Bus Patrol, we would not do anything.
We wouldn't do anything.
Correct.
But we, we would also hand over ownership of all the data collected.
And.
Now there's things in, after many days, it gets destroyed. There's all, you know, the law has components in it that, you know, for the safeguarding of it, that they would have to. But that is one thing that came up at facilities that was something that I wanted to look into. I got the answer for them.
Would student safety trump ownership of the data?
Sounds like a perfect issue for three point six. Exploring safety and protective factors. Does Colony feel it makes it safer?
So it hasn't been rolled out yet because there's a timeframe. You know, they have to put them onto it. Then you have to make notifications. You have to put up signs within the community. There's a lot of stuff that has to be done by Bus Patrol in Albany County in order for this to roll out. You know, people have seen it and I've shared some of the data of how many times you, people get hurt from, you know, passing buses and how many different issues have come up that, it happens a lot. You know, we've been lucky that we haven't had that. But, I mean, many school districts have not had that same kind of luck. People do pass school buses. We've had it happen. I don't think they've issued, like, the tickets out as much, correct, Jim?
They, when it's communicated to, and she pulls the information from the camera and submits it to DMV, but that's.
That's it. What they do, they don't have anybody advocating for or doing it. That's the quote. So those are the issues that come along with it. I just wanted to make sure we have a discussion about it. We can talk about it at facilities again tomorrow because.
Sure. I, I, I will pour you with more questions after this one. But the, uh, the, it would seem to me the biggest benefit to something like this, with the ticket prosecution, would be deterrence, right? Sort of like putting an ADT sign out on your lawn. But is there, do, do they provide any sort of, you know, I know you said there's communications, but that you have to do as part of the legal process or, but is there anything they provide around making sure everybody knows you pass a bus, you're gonna get caught, so don't pass a bus?
They're signing it up within their communities.
They provide reports.
But that's all provided by them?
Yeah, no, we get, we get notified.
We don't have to provide those physical materials.
We don't do anything of this. This is all something handled by the county and Bus Patrol.
They tell you like, hey, we have twenty-five tickets as well?
Yeah, we would know.
Tickets. Not twenty-five.
I mean, if a bunch of people are starting to get tickets here in Voorheesville because of this, that word's gonna spread pretty quick.
Yeah. It sounds a little bit like, we're like cameras.
Kind of similar to that. I was gonna, we can bring back the facilities tomorrow, if that's right. If, does anyone have any other comments?
For the facilities committee, I don't wanna speak for Rob, but to see how the rest of the board.
Yeah.
Of course, safety is, they're, you know, so I guess it's a balancing game. But I don't, I'd be curious to see how people that aren't on facilities, I mean, what is the benefit to us though? We don't see any.
We see no revenue from it. The only benefit is that there is a system monitoring this that can ticket anyone who violates.
And it would be a deterrent.
Yep.
And I suppose the additional, on buses where we don't have stop arm cameras, we now would.
Right.
But if you already have stop arm cameras. Would be, yeah. The fact that their business plan relies on revenue from these tickets suggests that there's enough in there for them to make that investment. And if we could stop those violations from occurring, I mean, yeah. I'm not trying to advocate at this point, but I can see where that would be something that would be an improvement to student safety.
Arji? The flip side is they have a financial incentive to identify violations that may not meet the letter, the letter of the law. I don't know how this works or what they're.
Isn't that, isn't that their problem?
I guess, but if our community members are being subjected to this, and they're the only ones, you know, profiting, I, I don't know. I have a lot of questions about it. Why do we, Bus Patrol get the money from the ticket because of a legal, a legal?
Percentage of it, right?
The county and then have come to an agreement.
Okay.
So this is through a county initiative.
And the company is owned by?
We have no idea.
The county.
They're a national company.
Yeah, interesting.
If there are questions to bring to the facilities committee, if you could just share them. So we can then kinda dig into it a little bit deeper and have a better conversation about looking into it and going through it.
Do we know how many buses we don't have cameras currently? Or is that a lot of work?
Well, we have, we've purchased five buses over the past two years, so the rest of them do not.
Jim, does this include small buses as well?
Yes.
So we have roughly thirty-four buses.
Thirty-two.
Thank you, Jim. Seventeen plus seventeen, right?
Thirty-six, twenty-seven.
You're counting the suburban.
Alright, that's where I'm at. So thirty-two buses, we have twenty-seven.
And how much is each camera for a retrofit? Cause I know we, we buy them and we buy it as a.
Probably going to be in the twenty-five hundred range. It's about eighteen hundred when you buy it as part of the, so.
Is this a contractual agreement with this company?
Yes, it's a contract that you'd have to sign with the board and with the county and the company itself.
Yeah, for how long?
That was a nondescript number that was in there, indefinite, is what it seemed. It's a contract that was, yeah, there was no number in there. There's a clause to remove it.
About seventy-something thousand dollars to put cameras on all buses. And, and the effort of the bus drivers to notice and mention to the transportation department has happened and the transportation department followed through. But we own the camera. We also can look at it and say, oh yes, this looks like something we may need to work. So it would, we would be the arbiter of the, I would say, letter of the law.
One of the big differences is this is considered a moving violation under the Bus Patrol side where it's just a, it's just a potential violation and in DMV's control or whether or not they do anything if it's ours. So it's a little different level.
A little bit more teeth with Bus Patrol, less teeth with us.
It's like, Bus Patrol may. Same deterrent. Yeah.
Not really, because I think, I think there's a level of subjectivity when we're doing it ourselves. I honestly, you got a bus driver who's going to determine whether or not I'm gonna proceed with this and report it versus Bus Patrol, which I'm going to suggest has a level of objectivity. Thoroughness, different than what we would have.
Perhaps, but I've gotta imagine our bus drivers are pretty vigilant when it comes to. They are great when someone passes. Yeah, who passes. Yeah, there's, they are, I, yeah. Talk to, talk to a bus driver for a minute.
I wonder how they feel about this.
I wanted to bring it to the board before we did anything else with it, just to have the conversation with you first. So facilities committee to board. And then it will probably go back to facilities committee and then.
Facilities committee, I would suggest you get a, have a conversation with whoever is in charge of transportation to find out how they feel about it.
Excellent.
And Bus Patrol.
And I would, I would like to know who's using this product and what has their experience been? And not the ones that they tell us we should talk to. They're a for-profit company headquartered in Washington DC, founded in nineteen ninety-five. The Canadian-backed investors. Thank you.
Hey, why in Canada?
I'd like to talk to you over this.
That's it? That's all I had on that one? So, yeah, so thanks for the discussion on that, yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna go to item three point six, which as Arji planned out would be another place to discuss the bus issue. But I, I, we, we have certain safety and protective factors that may be concerning. Frank and I were discussing the. Frank and I were discussing the idea of maybe the board would want an ad hoc committee to look forward, um, discuss protective issues, not just physical, but emotional components of making sure of this. And so in order to do that, we'd have to discuss this with the board and decide that we want to move forward in that area.
Yeah.
And Frank's going to take that.
Just can you say one thing? No, you'd be great. We had discussions over the summer, we, about SROs, about safety protective factors in the district, about social emotional health, all those things we, we had a conversation on. We then kind of almost hit like a stop gap on that for a little bit. Um, we got, I received five emails this week or in last week regarding the asking of an SRO, um, as you are aware, that I told you about. Um, so that was a conversation that's come up. So the question that we need to ask is, how do we want to proceed in understanding what we do as a safety, as safety in the district? What we feel is the most important aspects of what you can do in a district, and then how then do you proceed? Um, you know, I, I suggested the committee component because of the fact that you meet once a month. Committees meet again once a month or more so, and they can also then say, well, I want you to do the X, Y, Z. And so committees can easily tell me, Frank, I want you to get this report, this report, this report, I want you to do X, Y, Z. And then I can do those, bring it back to the committee and bring it back to the board. It can just make things a lot smoother than just having once a month meetings to be able to have a conversation. So that's kind of why the, the idea of the committee came up.
Thank you. This was a conversation I had here.
So it's just board members, it's a board committee?
It, it, the members of the committee could be different members for, it's our decision. And Frank may have some recommendations out of the board.
I would recommend me. But in that, and, yeah, in that end, I would say that really is truly the committee's decision of how they would want to put together, how they would want to continue moving forward with it. Um, and definitely make it help and design it and work those things truly up to the board.
I almost feel like, uh, put a committee together and then decide if they want to broaden it based on usefulness.
Like add more people?
Correct, yeah, right, like, like...
Start with a committee of...
Yeah, of, of the board, and then it always broadens it.
I feel as if we're muddying the waters. I would prefer a recommendation from our superintendent that the board can act upon.
So if you're asking for a recommendation of an SRO, I am not going to recommend either one at the moment because it truly is a board decision, and I'd like the board to direct me on which I agree.
It is a board decision, but we've, I prefer that the model is that we operate following the recommendation of our chief executive officer.
I, I'll say, I just don't think we have a good sense of what our community wants on this issue. Like, we talked about it, we talked about it over the summer a couple of times. There wasn't a lot, I didn't, my sense was there wasn't a lot of support among the board for pursuing an SRO. We were talking more about layered mitigation strategies and, and the different, lots of things, the myriad things we were doing to try and address safety. But there wasn't, I didn't, my impression was that there wasn't a lot of support for it. But there, we heard from one person tonight, and, and there are people who deal very strongly about this, and there are strong opinions on both sides. And I don't feel like I have a good sense of what their community wants.
Barbara, did you?
I echo, uh, the sentiment exactly. I, I think that we really do need to know a little bit more about what...
Uh, we're kind of going to go around. So you get, you get to wrap it up. Yeah.
Oh, I think it would be really nice to hear from students how they feel about if they would want an SRO or if they would feel uncomfortable with an SRO. Um, so, yeah, that's nice.
I do agree that we need more input. I do particularly want to hear how students feel across the board in all of the grades. I definitely don't think that we are in a position right now to ask Frank to make a decision about an SRO. I've already read out all of this time.
Uh, and also another layer is the staff, teachers. Like, it's very hard for me to say what makes someone feel safe in this building when I'm not in this building. You know, it's kind of, I certainly have personal opinions, but that doesn't really make, how you feel safer at school. I don't know how you find out from the community so that you get a good representation of the, that should be able to have a voice. I'm not sure how you do that. I also am more of a, a strong advocate for trying to help with the mental health piece of it. On the onset, to try to maybe prevent future threats, if you will, uh, have resources for kids that are struggling. And so it doesn't get to that level. Um, if you have unlimited money, I guess the discussion is different when you have budget constraints and there's trade-offs. Yeah, you've got to understand what those are and what they cost. I don't think it's a simple decision that Frank just says, I want this. Rob?
Wrap it up.
Uh, yeah, sorry, I, I thought we were doing a little more back and forth. I was trying to respond to Tim.
I just tried to...
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, well...
Go ahead and respond.
Well, now I'm going to say something else first, which, one, I've heard SRO a bunch of times, but, you know, you said ad hoc safety committee, so layered mitigation strategy and other things, I think should be part of that conversation.
Yeah, that's protective factor.
Part of that conversation. So it's not just a committee to say, should we have an SRO? That I'm sure would be a component of the conversation, but that's just, you know, not necessarily... Um, but speaking to your concern directly about a recommendation, I don't think we know enough. Tim, we, we, last time we went down this road, that was sort of how we started, was with a superintendent recommendation for a program by Albany County, and it was, sort of came out of nowhere. And we realized that we didn't know what students thought, what parents thought, what teachers thought, what, you know, our financial position was going to be over the next two years. There's a whole lot of components that go into that, and it's a complicated and fluid situation. So we did, I had the best job, good, but it, like, it, I, I think just saying, hey, Frank, make that decision, and let's go off a recommendation, I, I think we need to dig deeper and, and allow Frank to dig deeper based on the results of what we present, right? So I'm, I'm totally in favor of, of this sort of committee, be happy to participate in it too.
I'm not suggesting he make the decision.
No, I know, no, I know, a recommendation, but I, I think, I think we, that gives him more information to base a recommendation on over time, right? Uh, so that we can then be informed about, you know, about our decision.
The debates I've seen around SROs have to do whether or not who's their employer. Are they active police, are they retired, are they armed? But all I've read and all I've heard is very positive reports about having this presence, the right person with the right skill set in the building. I got a good feeling about SROs personally, but I know that there's a lot of other auxiliary issues around that that need to be discussed.
Yeah, and where, you know, where does it fit into the broader puzzle of, of all the other stuff that we can, would, or should be doing? But we did talk about it in the summer about trying to have, I don't remember, it's been a few months, but trying to have some sort of semi-regular discussion, and, and life happens and, and it's kind of falling off the agenda. I think it's a good way to make sure that we keep happening.
All right, so we're going to move forward with this committee, and Frank and I are going to discuss exactly how to get it off the ground. If you're interested in it, please email me in the next day or two if you're interested in participating. Expect meetings to happen at least once a month, if not more frequently. Um, and then we might be bringing those result, just as we do with facilities meetings and other meetings, we'll bring in those two, um, board meetings for future discussion to kind of keep, keep things moving. So they'll be kind of absolutely two discussions or three discussions.
I'm modeling...
I'm sorry, can I make one suggestion? I'd like to see us do almost like a forum where we invite, and, and we're not taking testimony, family or anything, but invite stakeholders from different communities. We could have Erin Jones, we could have Albany County Sheriff, we could have NISBA, right?
Yeah, these are...
Like, community members, students, teachers, right, to inform us of their views.
This is, yeah, and something the committee could be doing and having a survey if that's something, you know, so that people who can't be participating inform.
Exactly.
Right, so all of these are actions that the committee could take on behalf of the board, and the board could help, you know, direct if the, not, it's not going to be a committee of the board most likely, but it would be something that would work hand in hand. So that's the, great, these are things that we are all, we are bouncing back and forth in the discussion. This is something a committee could be doing for the board, to help inform a great, like, the best path forward for the district, for the students, for the people who work here, for the entire community, to make sure that there's safety, not just physical, but also emotional, because those feed off of each other.
We, um, I'm not opposed to what you're talking about, not fine with that. But we had talked about the board having from time to time workshop meetings. And this would lend itself to exactly that. Do you have a, a meeting devoted simply to that? Invite people in to sit at the table, provide testimony, have a hearing, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah.
Uh, and hear what they have to say, but it would be a board meeting.
That'd be a great, that's a great way to...
Now, that's another option, and it could be done in collaboration with the committee, or it could suffice instead of a committee.
I think that there's going to be an ongoing process, and so I don't want every other, you know, I don't want to add another meeting every month to the entire board.
I don't either.
But make, but we can...
I, I am being, I am being sensitive to what that woman back there said about the number of threats that have taken place in the last six months, and time has ticked.
We're, so Frank and I will work on it, and if you guys can send me something by, today is Monday, so in the next 48 hours to let me know if you're interested in participating in committee. That's on me.
Okay.
All right, so, um, we'll be back in touch and we'll let them, we'll let them know. Yes?
Yeah.
All right, so we're good, we're going to move forward with that. Um, with that, can we move to, uh, number four, the approval of minutes? Are we all good with that?
Yes.
Yep, I'll move them, I'll second them.
All right, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, and action items. We're going to do five, all the 5.1s, and, um, I think we can do all the 5.2s. And we can do the 5.3 and 5.4 and the 5.5 and 6, 7. All right, we're going to do all the 5s. Does anyone want to move 5?
Can I just ask a quick question on 5.7?
Yes, if anyone has any questions about any of those, before we move on.
I was just reading over the NISBA membership. Is this our only NISBA membership? Are there several NISBA memberships?
There's a separate policy one, I think.
Okay, so how much is the policy one?
It's...
You know, like, two to three thousand?
That's a service, that's not really a membership.
It's a service, yeah.
That we pay for?
Yes. I feel like it's around three-ish.
Yeah, somewhere around there. Like, I was kind of confused what this, this part was for.
That's the dues, your annual dues.
Our annual dues?
Yeah, hopefully we have someone here.
Yeah, I can explain if you'd like.
So that we have a NISBA, so that NISBA, like, it's hard?
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it's an organization that you belong to, it's the only board member organization there is. And it's one that provides you for, I would say, advocacy on behalf of our interests, uh, school board interests, uh, information, you get on board and all their webinars and all this other sort of stuff, training. And then the consulting services is a separate thing, although there are some things you can get as part of membership as well. But, uh, that's an annual dues amount, and there are other things that are not dues-based, that are fee-based. But we don't participate much in that. I talked about that a little bit, but we, we pretty much are all dues-based.
A lot of the publications on, on boarding, on membership and things like that, that...
Right, I saw that.
One of the things that I, and I'm just going to do that kind of shameless plug, but I would tell you, they have, they have five or six or seven full-time attorneys over there who have been working there for years. It's all they do is school. And that's, you've already paid for it. You could pick up the phone and talk to them anytime you want. I know that the lawyer, the, the superintendents don't like you to do that, but, um, there are, uh, there are times when those guys are on the phone all day long, oftentimes with superintendents and school board members and business officials, talking about issues. They're not giving you legal advice because they don't have that relationship, that attorney-client relationship, but they're giving you information that is answering questions that you might have. So I'd like to at least bring to the attention that for that amount, you have access to this legal information anytime you want.
I will add that Jay Verona is, um, an attorney that we've worked with, we've reached out to. He was also pivotal and crucial in making the equity policy that we've adopted in the past, um, through this one.
So you find a lot of value in that?
There is value in that. I, you know, I'm not agreeing with Tim, but I'm agreeing with Tim that there is value in having the attorneys and the ability to make...
And are the dues based on our size? But do we pay the same as things about here?
Yeah, it's, it's based on the size of the budget.
Okay.
There are categories of our budget size that's relatively cheap.
And in our function level summary, does this go under the board stuff?
Yes, I'm in the board. I'm done, yep.
I'll just, I think that was in my question, thanks. So, Tim, you brought up earlier ski club. I'll just point out that we have a volunteer ski club advisor that we're appointing this year.
Where is, is that in here now?
It's in 5.2.16.
And she's been pivotal, by the way, in getting this up and running.
Thank you, very, thank you.
That's fantastic. Can I ask one question? Uh, seal of civic readiness advisor, um, you expect this program to grow?
Yes, so, um, the question came up today if the second was appropriate, and, um, the answer I feel is yes. Second is, I think it's, you know, a program that we need. Um, he's a teacher who's doing that work, um, currently pro bono. Um, so, you know, and he's developed this program. I think it is a program that we can see grow. I think Tom is going to do a great job, um, pulling that effort in and getting more kids going. So I have 100% backup. I'd love to see the program grow, so that'd be great.
I think it will, I think it's happening mid-year and it's new, but I, I think it'll take off.
All right, so we know again.
Yeah, I heard a little bit about it.
We're not calling out, yeah. All right, are there any other questions on any of the items between 5.1 and 5.7?
I removed those.
Would anyone like to second those?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Argie, would you like to review the audit committee that happened two hours ago?
Yes, thank you, Rachel. So the audit committee met earlier this evening. Um, as Jim mentioned, we received the report from our external auditors, which was a glowing audit report. Thank you, Jim. Um, we also had our regular agenda items, so we reviewed our claims auditor reports. There were probably six exceptions, all small items, mainly attributable to having your staff who need to get up to speed on procedures. Um, there's one issue that came out of that report that we will review in policy. We'll talk about how we want to go over it, having to do with pins for athletes at the conclusion of the season. Um, we also reviewed our function level summary document as well as school lunch profit and loss. And as expected, we are running at a deficit of about 15,000 last month for school lunch fund, which, which is totally expected given the composition of our district and the lack of federal funds. That's it.
All right. And do, I don't think curriculum on that this month?
Curriculum will meet on November 15. Uh, we're going to do a little deeper dive into the test result report we saw tonight, and I invite any members of the board to let me, let me know if there's other things that you think you, we should have on that agenda. Please let me know, and I'll sit down with Frank, uh, this week and then figure out what's going to...
We have a list for you, ready to go.
Right, great.
All right, and facilities, way back in October.
I'll try to turn through it quickly because a lot of this stuff is going to be out of date that we just heard about. Um, so the, the, uh, track got done, resurfaced, painted. Uh, the tennis courts were almost done at the time, but now are they, end of October was the...
No, they will have to wait until spring because of, uh, environmental factors. Let's just say leaves hitting paint is not real good enough.
And, by the way, it's not tennis ball, it's not tennis, it's also pickleball, so we're doing both.
Yep.
Both through going.
And we talked about some service, uh, some service tickets for rooms with, uh, sort of interesting air mixes, I guess, coming in. It was a little too cold, you know, when the heat is on, but now heat's on, so we're good. Uh, we talked a bit about, uh, the website and being able to track visitors to the website, um, especially to see if folks are getting on a campus. Uh, Promethean board update, but we got a better one just now, so. project. Promethean board update, but we got a better one just now, so there you go. Stop arm cameras, which we also just talked about, capital project, which we've talked about a whole bunch, and now it'll be in the voters' hands. We did have an interesting discussion about lights for athletic fields, where, you know, there's, there's the potential to maybe, maybe, I mean, it will probably be visited again next time, I don't know where we left the conversation, but, like at Homecoming, we had portable lights, which can light up fields, and, you know, they can also be donated, you know, instead of having the district buy them all at once. So it's not something we've really sussed out all the way, but given that it's like $300,000 and a permanent fixture for athletic lights, and that's something we could only do in a capital project, which is five years off from this next one. If we wanted to do something any sooner, it would likely be something like that.
I think it's a tiny capital project.
But, but it was an interesting discussion. We did talk about, though, future projects, or at least we talked about talking about future projects and for our agenda for tomorrow. But, you know, I think we'll have some time cleared off where we don't have pressing issues of the capital project anymore, and now we could maybe spend some more time riffing on, you know, what do we want to accomplish in the next five years? So, pull us some ideas. Yeah, no pressure. Less than 24 hours. And I think that was about it. Any questions? Any comments? Anything that anyone here feels like we should be talking about, which is tomorrow? So, you know, you don't have a lot of lead time to get the agenda items, but if there's anything we missed, or you.
Lights.
Huh?
Lights.
Lights.
Watch, watch.
In the building?
What kind of lights?
Outside, you mean, that's those lights.
Outdoor lights.
Outdoor lights.
Outdoor lights.
Field lights.
All right, not pack lights, policy, policy, ready. All right.
Okay. We met on October 19th and got through some groups. I'll, I'll keep them grouped because I think it's easier to talk about them that way. Our first group, which you're going to see on the agenda tonight for votes, are kind of our computer internet grouping. So there's policy 4526, which is computer use and instruction. We reviewed that policy, and there aren't really, there aren't any changes to that. But attached to that is 4526R, which is the regulation that goes with it, and Shawna and Frank reviewed that, and there are some changes to those, to the policy that we already had. It'll be the second read that we'll vote on tonight. If anyone has any questions, I guess now would be the time. Our old policy talks about registering devices. There's a few.
Worldwide web.
Yeah, that's in the point one. We're not quite there, Tim, hold on.
That was right from NISBA though.
Jay, so that was cleaning that up a little bit and taking into account that we have issued devices now, the latest and greatest for what we're using. Also in this grouping is 4526.1, which is internet safety, and there's also a 4526.1R that goes with that. We reviewed both of those. It would be a second read for both of those because they're existing policies. Frank did a lot of research and review on that. We didn't love the NISBA suggested policy. We liked parts of it, we didn't love ours, so we made a leap to see what other districts were doing, and Frank came up with the one that we all.
Frank and Shawna.
Frank and Shawna.
Yeah, because, and that one is really comprehensive, really, really easy to understand, and just really spells it out. The, the regulation really doesn't change that much, but just the policy itself is pretty comprehensive.
And we got rid of the worldwide web language, Tim. So all those you'll see on the agenda tonight, and they're ready for a vote.
It's still on the version of R.
Yeah, the point one still has the worldwide web.
Throughout 4526.1.
That's a change.
Maybe we can move that, the words and worldwide web.
That says internet and worldwide web, so it has both.
Yes.
Well, the reason why, I think the reason why we talked about keeping that was the fact that NISBA did put it in their most recent update.
Yeah.
So we were a little bit confused by it because they sent us the most recent update to the policy and put it in there, so there might be some legal reason why they have that in there.
Overall, the language is.
Yeah, I would say it's updated.
I would take it out. And I don't know if we wait until we vote on it, or if I say that now, but just on 4526, we have a cross-reference for policy number 5695. If we could get rid of that, because we don't have that policy, and when we vote tonight, we'll vote on, is that correct?
Can I make, yeah, can I make also a suggestion for the 4526R, 4526s? Can we just make a note that we'll take out worldwide web and then still vote on it, so that we.
Sure.
That's.
Yeah, or contingent to whether or not it's deemed necessary.
Yeah.
As revised.
Yeah, we can.
Does anyone have any questions on that grouping?
Thank you for going through all that. That was, I know, really difficult stuff.
Well, Frank and Shawna did most of the work on that.
Thank you, Frank.
All right, our second group was about board development, and we do have a policy that would be a first read tonight, so it will not be up for a vote, and it's policy 2510, which is new board member orientation. That's a NISBA recommended policy. We don't currently have that policy. There was nothing striking or revolutionary about it, but we thought it might be helpful to have a policy just so that we're thinking about new board development as board members come on, or if board members want to attend a conference. Along with that, we already have policy 2520, board member trading, and 2521, school board conference workshops. We reviewed both of those too and didn't have any recommended changes, but we kind of tonight wanted to just bring to the board the concept of the new board development, or existing board development with this policy 2510, and just kind of a discussion about if somebody wanted to attend a conference, how that would work. Like who's going to manage the funds and make sure one person doesn't use all the funds, that RG doesn't go every single year, and Tim can't go. Not that it's a big problem, but just the discussion maybe, or something for the board to think about, how they might want to see that move forward if someone wanted to attend a conference. We were told that we do have some budget funds if someone wants to do that. I know some people want to go to conferences and pay for them themselves, which is always an option, but some people don't have that luxury, so. Most people have comments or thoughts. It seems to me an easy way is to have our president, whoever that is, kind of manage if someone was requesting to go to a board, and you know we have $6,000, making sure it's allocated appropriately, and who wants to go, when. People could get in a queue, be like, RG's going this year, or RG's going that year. I don't know. But we just thought we'd bring it to the board meeting for the whole board to think about that, after our discussion.
Yeah.
Tim and RG. Yeah, you summed it up well. Just one other point on the 2510, which is the first read one. We had a discussion, and Tim brought up the point that we, we happen to have a really well-functioning board, but if that was not the case, and we had a new board member that somebody just kind of stuck in a corner and didn't tell them anything or invite them to anything, that would really be a bad practice. And this policy that's up for first read basically makes clear that there has to be a process to basically integrate a new board member. So I thought that was a great thing.
If it wasn't for dysfunctional boards, NISBA would not be in business. And there was plenty of opportunities where a person get elected, maybe after a highly contested race, and nobody on the board wanted this person to join the board, and they kind of shunted them, and they didn't make them, make anything known to them, didn't share anything with them. And this affirms that we're not going to do it. Well, this is, this is an open door. We want you, it's an invitation to join.
Inclusive.
Inclusive.
Anyone have any more comments or questions on that grouping? Okay, and then our third group that we discussed at our meeting, there's no votes for tonight on this, is a grouping we're calling personal expression. We have a policy 5225, student personal expression, and we had gotten through a lot of the review and discussion, and then we ended up with a few legal questions that Frank was looking into, and we'll bring that back to our next committee meeting. And also, the NISBA policy 5225 mentions policy 5220, student publications, and we'll get that when we discuss, people who do these together may get our December meeting, unless there's a bunch of other policies that trump it.
I haven't.
Yeah. We briefly also discussed policy 8130, school safety plans in teens. We just discussed it briefly and decided we'd dig deeper at our December committee meeting. And lastly, we still have that fifth group that we've talked about a couple times now, the clubs, organizations, and we've been talking about these for a few months, and we thought they'd be ready for December meeting, but I don't know if that's still the case. So there's no huge rush for those either, so they're on our radar. I think that was kind of it. And I feel like, okay.
Are you sure?
I think so.
That's a lot.
Anything that I missed, or anything anyone wants us to make sure we're looking at?
Thank you.
Yep.
So we have new business, we have two different memoranda with VTA, and that, we're going to take those two together if there are any questions about those, 7.1 and 7.2. Does anyone want to move them?
I'll move them.
And you want to second them?
I will second them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 7.3 is the first read, so we won't pass that. And then, if it's okay with all of you, we can take 7.4, 7.5, and 7.6 all together.
Right, and those will be those two corrections that we mentioned.
Yeah, with the worldwide web adjustment as needed. And would anyone like to move that?
Who?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, then we have the acceptance of the audit report with all its, all its details. Unable to discuss that. And the acceptance also of some very generous donations for the drama club, the CSD in general, and the builders club. Would you like to move those together?
Sure.
Yes, any questions about any of those? No? RG, can you move the audit?
Yes, I'll move the audit report and the donations.
All right. Anyone want to second that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This brings us to a second opportunity for the public to be heard. There was a possibility that there's a student here who would like to be heard. If, if so, would please approach the podium, and you just open with your name and then what you're gonna.
I'm just hoping.
I, we are not sure.
We think it's.
All right. My name is Will Lerman, and I'm addressing the bus camera issue. What does the bus patrol cameras run off of? Electric from the bus or batteries that have to recharge?
Very good question.
We do not typically respond to those questions. We thank you for your comment, but we take your question into advisement, and an answer will probably be forthcoming at some point, understanding that there's a lot of moves that we jump.
All right, I'm going to answer right now, just because it's a student and he's here, and I'm going to just answer very quickly.
Okay.
Just because this is a super easy one for facilities, I know.
Sorry.
That was great, though. That was absolutely correct. It runs on the bus, so when the bus is on, the energy from that bus automatically doesn't. Typically, we don't answer that. You are absolutely correct. I just couldn't do it.
I am so glad that we were able to do that. Thank you, Will, for your question. And this is also an opportunity for anyone else in the public to be heard. I think we have only you as a student here, and there are members in public, though, if anyone in public would like to be heard, please feel free. Well, no, we're not going to wait. There's also an opportunity for the public to be in for it to be heard, if there's anything the board would like to share or. Dates to remember, we have a board meeting that will be held on the 5th. That's not going to be held in the LGI, which it says in the agenda. It will be held in the elementary school with the exact location to be shared. There's also a capital project vote, which will be held in this building in the foyer in front of the pack, and facilities meeting tomorrow.
And you can get your absentee ballots if you can't vote or vote on this one, too.
Yes.
Get one now, if you can't be here.
And you're 18 or 19.
True, sorry.
All right. If there's no more questions or comments, we now have the opportunity to adjourn. If someone would like to move that?
I'll move it.
Anyone like to second?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you. Thank you all for being here.